The meeting is now called to order. Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Yes, we have all board members except for Jennifer Nelson Wilson. Thank you.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now move on to the public comment portion this evening. Per Board bylaw, speakers will be placed typically in either Group One or Group Two. This evening, though, we only have speakers from Group One, which is CCS students, CCS parents or guardians, employees, and Carmel residents. Both speakers are from that group. As a reminder, participants must be recognized by the presiding officer and must preface their comments by an announcement of their name and group affiliation if applicable. Comments may not reference specific corporation employees, patrons, or students. Comments shall be directed to the Board, but no person may address or question individual Board members. The School Board will not act on or respond to questions or comments made during public comment, but will take them under advisement. So Dr. O has already placed the numbers for the speakers in the basket. And up first to speak, we have Kirsten Kovalevsky, and up second is Richard Gregory. And just a reminder that you have three minutes to speak. And there's a timer up there at the podium as well as here on the screen. So up first, we have Kirsten Kovalevsky.
My name is Kirsten Kovalevsky. I am the mother of a seventeen-year-old Carmel High School student. She is a cisgender girl, and she has been repeatedly misgendered at her practicum that she has to participate in for a grade and for a graduation requirement. I can't tell you how damaging this has been to her. She has been, throughout her life, repeatedly misgendered, and she's dealt with it the best that she can. And this year, it has really reached its limit to constantly have children telling you you're a boy when you are not a boy, and you correct them, and they continue to insist you're a boy. It is just really harmful, really damaging. She has come home crying about it. She was assertive and went to the director of her practicum, and the director did talk to the children, and it made no impact. That happened twice. The third time, she left, and she said she would not go back. This is not the way to support a confident, academically successful student. I know a lot of people think misgendering is something that only affects trans students. It does affect them. But this is an issue of respect for all students. And Sophie, she asked me to come here tonight to ask that there be education for both children and teachers, staff, in showing respect for the names and identities of all people. And that's why I'm here and what I'm asking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Richard Gregory. And again, you have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Richard Gregory. Thank you for allowing me to present my views on grading for equity. I understand that Carmel has been using grading for equity for four years, as published by Feldman in 2018. I have lived in Carmel and taught microbiology and immunology at IU for more than thirty years. I have seen grading for equity in these college programs and fought against them. Let me explain why. In equity grading, lenient grading leads to less learning and grade inflation, no zero-grade mandates, bans on grading homework, and prohibitions on penalties for late work and cheating. Such policies tend to reduce expectations and accountability for students, lower teachers' ability to manage their classrooms and motivate students, and confuse parents who do not understand what these grades mean. A CCS communicated this grading policy change to the parents of our students. I suspect not. Unfortunately, these policies lower academic standards and are likely to do long-term damage to educational equity. The recent School Board workshop presented several old references on this topic, but ignored more recent references. For example, the more recent work of Coffey and Tyner in 2024 demonstrated that equity-grading students learn less and retain less. They concluded that, one, the push for more equitable grading policies has increased grade inflation and offered no evidence of greater learning. Some aspects of traditional grading can cause inequities, but policies that make grading more lenient are not the answer, especially as schools deal with academic and behavioral challenges. Equity grading was developed to help low-performing students. However, Bowden in '24 concluded that lowering standards is associated with low-achieving students suffering the most. Three other reports since 2020 found that high school students assigned to a tougher-grading teacher scored higher in math. Clark County in Nevada implemented equity grading in 2022, and their data indicated that allowing students to turn in late work led to apathy. Students didn't find any value in doing assignments that didn't affect their final grade. Students who didn't complete homework did poorly on assessments, and students started gaming the system when they learned they could earn fifty percent for no work done. Teaching kids they don't need to do anything to earn half-credit didn't make things more equitable. We are teaching our children to be adults. They will make mistakes, and that's okay in school. They should receive an appropriate score and learn from that. But when those equity-grading children grow up and have critical jobs, like in the military or medical fields, and they make a mistake, there are no do-overs. They may die. These examples are extreme, but my point is that as adults, we may lose our jobs if we expect to be able to repeat a work assignment as many times as we need to get it right. We should not teach our children these lenient values. I always taught my students that the only way we learn is to be challenged, not coddled. Thank you for your consideration of these.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is our consent items. Tonight, our consent includes the Personnel Report, Claims, Payroll, Gift Applications, the October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four workshop session minutes, and the October twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four regular session minutes. As a reminder to everyone, the consent is the part of our meeting agenda where it's our designated section for the routine items that the Board has to pass as part of our business that we do. Do I have a motion to approve the consent items? Thank you, Greg. Do I have a second? Thank you, Katie. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll all take a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries. Next, we have a special presentation regarding the commemoration of the Carmel High School Basketball Court, and this will be with Dr. Ferris.
Thank you. Good evening, and it is a privilege to be here. And I want to recognize Mr. Enskeep that is with us tonight, too, as our Activities Director. It is a privilege to present you a recommendation from Carmel High School this evening. This has been a long time coming. Since the building of Carmel Gymnasium in the nineteen fifties, the basketball court has had many great moments. Six Carmel basketball state championship teams have showcased their talents on the court. Decades of classes from CHS graduated on that floor. We wouldn't fit today. And former President Bill Clinton once gave an address to the student body in front of the North Basketball Goal. Tonight, it is our honor to recommend the iconic basketball court take on a new name, Bill Shepherd Court. Bill Shepherd left his mark on the Carmel community as an administrator, coach, and visionary leader. During a time when Carmel was a small town becoming a larger city, Bill laid the groundwork for the extracurricular success of Carmel High School. Mr. Shepherd started his basketball coaching career at Mitchell in southern Indiana in nineteen forty-nine and took over the boys' basketball coaching position at Carmel in nineteen fifty-eight. As the Athletics Director and Head Basketball Coach, Mr. Shepherd led the Greyhounds to the nineteen seventy state championship game. It was a monumental achievement for the school and the entire school community to show their pride and spirit at Carmel High School and in the city. Mr. Shepherd and his wife Edie had four children. Two of the sons, Billy and David, were named Indiana Mr. Basketball in nineteen sixty-eight and nineteen seventy. They remained the only Mr. Basketball recipients for Carmel High School. And a third son, Steve, was a member of the boys' basketball title in nineteen seventy-seven. As a coach of the team during this time period, the Greyhounds won fifty straight home games and played routinely before sold-out crowds in the Carmel Gymnasium. Leading the Athletic Department for thirty-two years, Bill Shepherd oversaw tremendous growth during an era where Carmel went from being a rural community to a rising suburb on the Indiana map. During his time as Athletics Director, Greyhound teams captured forty-one state championships, including the very first one at Carmel High School in nineteen seventy for the boys' golf program. Mr. Shepherd retired from Carmel High School in nineteen ninety-two and continued to support Greyhound student athletes until his passing at the age of ninety-one in two thousand nineteen. The Eric Clark Activity Center is one of the great venues for basketball in the state. To honor the contributions and impact of Bill Shepherd with the renaming of the court would be a fitting tribute to an individual that helped place Carmel on the map as the athletic powerhouse in the state of Indiana. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Ferris. Next, we have our action items, and our first one are the two thousand twenty-five School Board Meeting Dates. And these were presented at a previous meeting on October twenty-eighth of this year. So these should be available on Board Docs for you to take a look at. And again, we've already discussed them and tried to make sure that we are really mindful of holidays and any other events that could be happening. May I have a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-five School Board Meeting Dates? Thank you, Katie. May I have a second? Thank you, Greg. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries. Our next action item is what Dr. Ferris just presented about, the commemoration of the Carmel High School Basketball Court. And I'll toss it over to Dr. Beresford.
Thank you very much. And Mrs. Nobus, if you could pop up that PowerPoint, and you could just scroll through it. I'm not going to read it to anybody, but I thought it'd be good to have a good visual. This idea was first brought to the attention of the administration in February twenty twenty by legendary Carmel High School Athletic Directors and School Administrators Bobby Cox and Lee Lonzo. Bill Shepherd had passed away on March fourteenth in two thousand nineteen, the age of ninety-one, as was mentioned. And I believe that event motivated Bobby and Lee to make a recommendation to name the court after Coach Shepherd. And at that time, the Board was very interested in that. And then this thing came through called the global pandemic. And at that point in time, that recommendation kind of got shelved because we were drinking from a fire hose at that point in time. And then, most recently, the NBA All-Star Game was held at Lucas Oil Stadium, and part of the festivities included these huge basketball statues. And one of those was featuring the Shepherd Boys and Coach. And we actually have that basketball at Carmel High School right now on loan. And that kind of, you know, that kind of brought it back up to our attention. And it was like, we need to get moving on that and bring it back to you. So I know you're very much aware of this because of the... We've had to tweak the policy for commemorating, but we're all done with that now. And so, permission to Board Policy Seventy-two Fifty Commemoration of School Facilities. It's our recommendation, Administration, to name the basketball court in Eric Clark Activity Center of Carmel High School, Bill Shepherd Court. And that's our recommendation.
Thank you. It looks like it's just coming up on the screen, so we'll pause for a second.
And I know we've heard that resume several times, but what an amazing career and what a legacy it's left for Carmel High School and our athletic program. So there it is, Bill Shepherd.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the commemoration of the Carmel High School Basketball Court, permanently naming the Carmel High School Basketball Court in the Eric Clark Activity Center, Shepherd Court? Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you, Katie. Any discussion? Katie?
I just wanted to say thank you to the Carmel High School Administration Team and the Athletic Director, Mr. Enskeep, for bringing this. Thank you to the Shepherd family for your continued involvement and support. Seeing the list of things that he had the ability to do really warms my heart for all the students and the families that they touched, and also to the people who are currently working right now in our schools, our teachers, our coaches, our support staff, because it's really hard in the day-to-day to see the legacy that you're making. But I think this is a great example of how it's those small and simple moments, and it's just the showing up every day that, in the long run, makes a wonderful difference. And I'm so excited for our community and our schools to continue this legacy. Congratulations.
Thank you, Katie. We'll now take a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries. Our next action item is the Bid Award for the Cherry Tree Softball Complex. Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. You might remember that we already have awarded for the artificial turf for that project because we needed to get that going because of the delivery time. So this is the balance of that project, and the amount is five hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars to delay general contractors, and we would recommend your approval. It's well within our budget that we had provided for this.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the Bid Award for the Cherry Tree Softball Complex? Thank you, Greg. A second? Thank you, Katie. Any discussion? I just had a quick question. Was this the... I remember you had talked about this, that we were doing the second bid. Was this for more of like the fencing, I believe, or the surrounding areas?
Yes, it's all the surrounding areas. It is for fencing, but also there's everything from painting to bleachers. This includes new bleachers. The existing bleachers are no longer meet code, and we thought this would be the time to bring them up to standard.
Thank you. We will now take a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries. Next up in action items, we have a group of change orders. So Action Items five point four through five point eight. And those change orders include the West Clay Elementary Interior Renovations, the Carmel High School Football Stadium South Support Building, the Carmel High School Freshmen Center Interior Renovations, the Creekside Middle School, and West Clay Elementary School Site renovations, and the Cherry Tree Elementary renovations. May I have a motion to vote on the change orders? Items five point five, four, five point five, five point six, five point seven, and five point eight as a group? Thank you, Louise. May I have a second? Thank you, Katie. All those in favor of lumping those together in one group, say aye. Aye, thank you. Mr. McMichael, did you want to talk about those?
I do.
Each item? Thank you.
Not each item, but these are all deduct change orders. That doesn't happen very often. And the total amount of deduct is a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. And I thought that was worth mentioning. And some of these are backward... They'll be charged back. We may have had a situation where the original contractor ended up not doing the work, so somebody else did. And so that's lowering the contract. And then there are some, what we call, closeout change orders. The project's finished, like the South Support Building, and there's some unused allowances in the contractor has in their contract. And so it's basically closing those out. So we're pleased to have these deduct change orders. We prefer those over add change orders.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion to approve Action Items five point four through five point eight? Thank you, Greg. May I have a second? Thank you, Katie. Any discussion on those? A for deduct. We will now take a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries. Our last action item this evening is the Permission to Advertise for a Public Hearing on Additional Appropriation. Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. This is additional appropriation for our Education Fund, our Operating Referendum and Safety Referendum, and a very small addition for the Operating Fund. And these are mostly due in the Education Fund and the Operating Referendum. When we built the budget, a year and a half or so ago, we had had declining enrollment after the pandemic. And so at the time we built this budget, we built it on the assumption that that may continue because we're always going to try to be conservative because we don't want to plan to spend money that we won't have. So we had assumed a loss of about sixty-nine students in the first year and about seventy-five in the second year. And so the good news is that in both of those years, we actually grew slightly. Not very much, but definitely in the positive. But that difference between the minus versus the plus, as you'll recall, generates about sixty-eight hundred dollars or so per student. And of course, we... So we had more students than we anticipated. That was... Less students was reflected in the budget, thus the need now to, as more students did attend. That also, of course, has an expense impact because with more students, we have more teachers than we would have assumed a year and a half ago. And so that's essentially most of what is reflected in the additional appropriation for the Education Fund and the Operating Referendum. In the Safety Referendum, as you know, a lot of that's contracted out for school resource officers as well as a sanction program. And so we received... It's actually like a fourth quarter of twenty-three invoice in twenty-four. So we paid that, of course, but that's also causing... So it was delayed, basically. It was a timing issue. So that's causing an additional appropriation for the Safety Referendum. But because we didn't spend it in twenty-four, of course, we have cash to back these up or we wouldn't be bringing them. And so that's primarily what is reflected in that additional appropriation.
Thank you for that explanation. May I have a motion to approve the Permission to Advertise for a Public Hearing on Additional Appropriation? Thank you, Katie. May I have a second? Thank you, Greg. Any discussion?
A question on the Safety Referendum invoices. So those... That was about six hundred thousand dollars. That was expected to be... So we budgeted that in twenty-three, but the invoices came in twenty-four. Did we see a reduction in planned expenses in twenty-three of that amount?
The short answer is we did. It won't match up with this because in twenty-three, as well as years prior to that, as you know, a lot of this program and the safety... Pretty much all the program in the Safety Referendum was new when we received that refer... Had approval for that referendum. So we were kind of growing into it. You may recall that initially, we'd set the tax rate at about three and a half cents rather than five cents. So we were constantly growing as the SROs, for example, to... It took a couple of years to get fully staffed. And so we had a lot of things going on in twenty-three as well. And so it's not a direct relationship. But the fact is, we would have paid that payment had they sent it to us. We would have paid it in twenty-three rather than twenty-four. So the impact of it is, is it looks like, I guess, fifteen months of expenses rather than twelve because we have twenty-three expenses paid in twenty-four. And then assuming they don't do the same thing this year, if we received this equivalent invoice this year, you know, in December, then we'll pay it in the proper calendar year. And so if that's the case, then thus the need for the additional appropriation.
In the Education Fund and Operating Referendum, there's an increase of about one and a half million.
That's right.
And I think the comments in the document indicate it's primarily staffing.
Yes.
Do you have any ideas, like how many teachers and IAs or subs we hired? Or any feel for that?
It's mostly teachers. When I project budgets and so forth, I'm focused primarily on teachers. And because, A, that's our greatest expense. But you'll recall that the expenses in those two funds is ninety-six percent salary and benefits. So you can assume that virtually all of that was salaries, and it would be mostly teachers. There may have been, you know, any... The instructional assistants will vary from year to year. Some of them will. We have some, we call it class-size IAs. And first, kindergarten IAs are there every year. But as we begin school, we'll see a class that has a higher number. And so, you know, we'll add an instructional assistant to assist the teacher. And so those can vary from year to year based on kind of where the... What grade the kids show up. But it would be... This would be primarily additional teachers. And one last thing I would say is you've, I think, heard me say that when we're losing enrollment, you know, we lose about sixty-eight hundred dollars per student. And about half of that, generally, we can make up because if we have less kids, we may need less teachers. The other half is much more painful because the sixty-eight hundred isn't just for the classroom teacher. It's for everybody in the school except like, at least the instructional staff. So the principal, everything from the principal to teachers, assistant principal, and so forth. Well, when we gain students, it works the other way. So we didn't spend a million and a half dollars on additional staff. So... But that's the revenue that we'll receive. And so it works on the plus side when you're growing. We... About half of that or so would be for additional staff. The other half will... It'll add to our cash balance, really. And some of which we need because, you know, the dollar amount needs to grow as the expenses grow. So the impact of enrollment, when it's in the, you know, positive, that helps us a lot financially. And when it's negative, it's a real challenge.
And just one last. It's probably more of a comment. So what we're doing now is it's an appropriation for the remaining of the year when we see we're trying to balance our last expenditures. And we can see... And this is a very routine process that all districts that I've not... I've looked at a few other... This is very common.
It is.
End-of-year process. And it's... The two-point-one million dollars is about... It's a little less than a percent of the overall budget. So it's sort of a nominal amount. So... And this looks very reasonable to me, so I just wanted to add that comment. Yes, we're asking for two-point-one million dollars more budget, but this is something we plan to do at the end of each year. And this isn't any kind of unusual amount or a surprise or anything. This is just kind of business as usual. Is that accurate, would you say?
It is. And the final thing I would say is that when we ask for this, we're going to be very conservative. to be very conservative. So the odds are well in the favor that we won't need all of it. And of course, appropriations is just giving us the authority to spend for the financial liabilities that we have. So the fact that we appropriate it doesn't mean we're automatically going to, we won't spend it unless we have commitments that we, that we need to make. And so we'll tend to be conservative, which means we're more likely to have some of this unused at the end of the year as compared to, because if we come up short, then we would have to hold an expense, and it would be late because we wouldn't be able to pay it until next year. So this is, this is a very conservative method.
So, so the budget in...
Or liberal, maybe, I should say.
Liberal, yeah. So the budget was under the revenue plan.
Yes.
And now that we've gotten closer to the end of the spending cycle, so to speak, we're able to reach into the revenue, but we're still not spending the full revenue that was in the levies and all that? Is that inaccurate?
Yes, that's correct. So when the budget was published almost two years ago, both the revenue was, turned out to be understated because we grew more than we thought. And likewise, the expenses were understated. So this is addressing the expense side because we need the appropriation as the authority to actually spend the money, the additional funds that we receive.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We'll now take a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries. Next on our agenda is our discussion item. It is the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five CCS legislative letter. And this is written by a combination of the board and administration. And we look at past legislative letters and then things that the legislators have looked at. This is a, the next year is a budget year for them. So they have a longer session than usual. And in the spirit of working together and camaraderie, we present, you know, send them items that we would like them to look at and consider. I'll just highlight a couple of those, and I'll let you go, Dr. Bearsford. One thing I know is, as a larger district, there are quite a few extra regulations and kind of some, I guess, hoops we have to jump through that include quite a bit of expenses. And so we've asked, asking to try, kind of relieve us of that, as well as continuing to ask the state to adequately fund our schools. I'll turn it over to you.
Why, thank you. First off, when we talk about legislative letters, sometimes you think, well, you're going to write a letter to legislatures and tell them what we want and, you know, pound our fist on the desk or whatever. But actually, our goal continues is to be, is to partner with our state leaders. And we can serve as a, in our letter, we put a credible, a credible resource from the field on managed relating to educating our children. And we like to offer feedback to our legislature so they can see, you know, what the boots-on-the-ground effect of legislation and public policy can do. Neither the state leaders and legislature or us in public schools want unintended consequences of policy or legislation. And so we always offer ourselves to be a partner in that because we're in a unique position to be able to, you know, to give firsthand information on how things are going to land at the local level and in the district. Now, this being a budget year, this is paragraph two, for you guys that are following along. We realize new biennium is the focal point of this next session. I mean, they're going to have to make determinations on how the money's going to be spent. And there's two things that are true every time we get to a biennium. And number one is that they're going to get a lot more people asking for that money than they're going to be able to fund. And so it's a difficult job that they have in determining how that money at the state level is going to be distributed. And it's very similar to what we do because once we find out what we get from the state legislature, then we have to determine how we're going to divide that money up. And if it's, it will determine if there'll be a raise for teachers and staff. And it'll also determine programming at times. And sometimes it requires us to, you know, the state always requires us to add stuff. We don't subtract too many times, but we add quite a bit. But the question is, is how's that going to be funded? And if some things are required and some things are things we want to do, sometimes we have to cut what we want to do to pay for what we have to do. And so it's really a back and forth on that. And our ask is always the same, to just adequately fund us and make sure that we don't have to make cuts and hard decisions as much as possible. Probably the most important piece of the letters in our third paragraph, where we talk about the importance of the teacher in the classroom because, I've said this several times before, but when you look at the org chart of Carmel Clay Schools, at the top of the org chart is a student and a teacher because that's where the magic happens. So the rest of us are all support, you know, for that. And at the very bottom is your old superintendent and the five board members because we're the, you know, we're the ones that are the farthest away from the direct contact with the kids. But of course, we're trying to do everything we can to support the kids. So that's the most important part. And once again, we're appealing to our legislature to pay attention because the teacher shortage, and really administration shortage, is real in Indiana, just like it is all across the country. And to keep, you know, to keep making the teaching profession what it is, a calling and a special thing, and something that should be respected and supported. And if we want young people like these two standing in the front row here to become teachers, which we hope you do, you know, we have to let them know that we've got your back and you're going to have a great career and we're going to take care of you. Because that's, those are all real important to encourage young people and incentivize people to be, to be teachers, you know, to join the ranks and make a big difference in kids' lives. So we're always going to be bringing that up. And we feel like that all legislation should be written through the lens of that shortage. Don't do anything that could cause more shortage in the teaching profession. And of course, do all you can to promote it. And we think that's what's needed, you know, to, you know, have our state move forward in a positive way. And so that's our, really our hope. And really, our focus of this legislative letters, let them know that we want to work with you. And the other part is, here's some things that we have common interests about. And so like, you know, like Kristen mentioned, you know, a foundation increase is the baseline amount of money that schools get, that we get adequate, and maybe an increase in that to somewhat keep up with the cost of living would be great. And then we also added some things that are a little more detailed, like we encourage to support teacher professional development because there's a requirement to, for teachers in elementary school to get early literacy, professional endorsement. And so to do that, you know, we're going to need support to be able to have programming to accomplish that. And there's a timeline on that. We encourage the legislature to, when utilizing tax dollars for all kinds of different educational settings, that all people who receive those tax dollars have the exact same requirements to be held accountable for how you spend the money, just like all the steps that Mr. McMichael goes through to pass a budget, that everyone should have to go through that, and that the State Board of Accounts should be keeping tabs on all that. We've been kind of the poster child for bad referendum language because so many Carmel citizens were not happy at the last referendum because the language on the ballot was very misleading. And we had quite a few people that were just not, were angry when they came out of the, you know, out of the polls because of the way that was written. And we spent a lot of time communicating. And we deal, along with all of our, all of our neighbors and schools across Indiana that are in the, you know, that need to do referendums, agree that that language needs to change. And hopefully, there'll be some changes that way. There's some things with early learning. We believe that if we want substantial and sustainable improvement in kids knowing how to read by third grade, that early learning is the way to go. That investment, when kids are younger, is going to go much farther than even retention and those sorts of strategies. And so there's a thing called on my way pre-K programming, and we would do anything to support that public schools can get, you know, an efficient and easy way to be part of that. And then finally, Mr. McMichael's favorite is, it was like, how many years ago was it, Roger? It was that accrual accounting was put in place as a pilot. It's over a decade, maybe two. It feels that long. Oh, it's, I know it's been more than that, yeah. Because it was, was in place a long time before I got here. So it's at least ten years. But anyhow, it picked fifteen school districts, large districts like ours, and required us to do what's called gap accounting or accrual accounting. And it's been quite expensive to implement that. And we don't see any real, real gain out of that. And it's been a pilot. And I think there should be a rule, like, when you do a pilot, it should only be so many years because, you know, this pilot's going, you know. I think the plane should have landed a long time ago. But anyhow, we, you know, we don't see a big advantage of that over doing regular fund accounting in that space. So we would, you know, we have an interest in making that optional so the districts can use that accounting method if they'd like to. But we estimate we're probably spending a hundred thousand dollars a year on that, that type of accounting that we don't necessarily need. And if you don't know, we get, you know, we get a, every year, we have an audit of our accounts by the State Board of Accounts. And so it's very difficult for a government entity to get out of whack financially. So that's another thing that we're interested in as well. And some of those things might, might be something that legislatures are interested in, some of them won't. And, but these are just things we want to bring to our attention. We've always had a good relationship with our local legislators and some of the education committee people. So we just want to get it out there that, hey, we're here to partner with you and do the best we can as we go into this next session with a new biennium.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is our reports. Our first report is the Staff and Student Services Report with Dr. O'Stryke.
Thank you very much, President Koke, Dr. Bearsford, and members of the board. Tonight, I'm going to be presenting to you to talk a little bit about our Carmel High School alumni that are now working for us here within Carmel Clay Schools. And then we're going to have a strategic plan update for you all. And so typically, if you have a video, you play it at the end, but I'm going to play it first for you all today. So here we go.
C-C-C-A-R-M-M-M-E-L-C-A-R-M-M-E-L-Carmel-Carmel, let's go home!
I am the class of two thousand sixteen, two thousand three.
Twenty-twenty.
I graduated nineteen eighty-two.
Class of...
I'm going to pause here real quick, see if we can get that volume up for everyone. Let's try it.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-seventeen.
I think it has to go with the...
Class of oh-three.
Nineteen eighty-five.
Nineteen ninety-five.
And I graduated Carmel High School in twenty eighteen.
This is Nobis. Let me check one thing here on Vivy. See if I can get that volume up for everyone. One moment. Volume, there we go. Let's see if that works. And one more try.
C-C-C-A-R-M-M-M-E-L-C-A-R-M-M-E-L-Carmel-Carmel, let's go home!
I am the class of two thousand sixteen, two thousand three.
Twenty-twenty.
I graduated nineteen eighty-two.
Class of oh-six.
Nineteen seventy-four.
Twenty-seventeen.
Two thousand seven.
Class of oh-three.
Nineteen eighty-five.
Nineteen ninety-five.
And I graduated Carmel High School in twenty eighteen.
I graduated nineteen sixty-nine.
But you know why? It was always a feeling. Driving full-time keeps me going, keeps me busy.
I think it just feels like home for most of us. It's just like the place that we grew up, and then we just still get to come here every day for work.
I feel like there's just a different sense of pride. I think that comes from being a former Greyhound, I guess, but always being a Greyhound.
Being from Carmel, I always had this desire to come back and teach in Carmel. And with Creekside Middle School opening and a position opening, I took the opportunity to come here and have been here ever since.
This is where I live.
Well, it's funny, I live in Fishers now, but I wanted to drive for Carmel because that's, I mean, I went to Orchard Park, I went to Clay, I went to Carmel High School.
It's almost indescribable. After being a police officer for a total fourteen years now, knowing that my responsibility is probably as big as it's ever been, and in the hometown where I grew up, it's, it's an indescribable feeling of honor and pride.
Yeah, some of the people that I now get to work with are also Carmel alums that I know. And I have, I have kids of friends now, which is a little mind-blowing, but yeah, super fun.
Well, I was lucky enough to have a son, a niece, a nephew, two grandsons graduate, and now I'm on my last one, who's an eighth grader here at school with me.
Brittany was in my club, Wild Bunch.
I was.
As a student.
I was.
And Seeg and I, I was a softball player, he was a baseball player when we were in high school, so...
And Jimmy and I used to study together.
Kenny and I pretty much gone to school almost every year of our lives.
And all four of us went to pretty university.
Yeah!
I did not.
Principal Klingensmith at Carmel Elementary, where I work, coincidentally, we found out, was my sixth-grade social studies teacher. It was her first year of teaching, and it was twenty-four years ago, but she was my sixth-grade social studies teacher.
Being on Smokey Row, going, being a cougar, going like, my, I've never had any negative effect going. And I have kids, and so my dream was, okay, if I'm here in Carmel, can I get my kids to also be part of the CCS district and have the amazing teachers and experience that I have?
And if education is in, you know, the career path that you're looking for, I think it draws a lot of people back, just because of the prestige, if you will, and respect that the school system has.
It's all full circle for me, and I've just absolutely loved how successful Carmel set me up to be.
So I've always wanted to be a teacher. And at Carmel High School, they have an amazing program called Kids Corner, where I spent half of my day planning, creating, and teaching preschool-age students.
When I was in college, I came back here to Carmel High School to shadow Dave Schlepper, who was my freshman center counselor, and knew that this is what I wanted to do after spending a day with him.
I actually thank Carmel High School for showing me my career. I did best buddies freshman year through senior year, and now I am the special education teacher here.
Got on the tutor list for NHS, and I had a handful of tutoring gigs that I did at the old Carmel Library, also known as the Wellness Center.
Besides being in the marching after four years and having a lot of that structure and that background, I got to volunteer with and have an elective class with at the time that Carmel placed school police with the two police officers that were assigned inside of Carmel High School.
I did cadet teaching, but I actually did cadet teaching in middle school because I really wanted to go back and work with my eighth-grade English teacher, Mr. Elijah Moffett, who's back at Clay.
And I've worked in three other districts. The level of expectation here in Carmel is different. And I think that's what brings the best out of him, us as administrators and our student, and students, and our community.
I'm way more invested, like, in this school. So when opportunities come up to work at a basketball game or a football game, or coach track or cheerleading, I'm like all-in because I loved it here and I loved the experience that this school gave me. So my heart is really in it, and it makes me excited to come to work every day.
It would be the last thing that junior high Dave would think that he would be doing at this point in his life. But this is where I am, and I love it, and I don't plan on going anywhere.
It's the people, the people you work with, your community you live in, families, other people's children that I get to enjoy over and over again.
Carmel just offers a community that is unmatched and unlike anything, anything else.
The people. The people make Carmel special.
The people, the sense of community that there is here, in the sense that education is really important.
Loved high school.
Yes, me too.
I did.
And my parents were teachers, so I have to tell you, I loved high school so much that I had, I have a favorite room, C-149 was my favorite room. Yes. So sometimes I just go to C-149 still as an adult.
Oh, that's cute.
I love C-149. You know what, Mr. Itzke?
Well, thank you, Mrs. Bauer, for putting that together for us. We really appreciate it. And we'll get it up on the website here so we can see that and maybe hear it a little bit better. But recently, what we did is we went ahead and sent an email to all of our staff members asking if we have any Carmel High School alum that are teaching or staff members. And when we did that, we also offered them the opportunity to come to our Carmel High School open house. We were able to get them a Carmel Alumni t-shirt that you can see them wearing up on the slide. And then we got together and took a picture with over eighty alumni... Um, and then we got together and took a picture with, uh, over eighty alumni that showed up, uh, for our group photo, which was very exciting. Uh, before I ask you, and I'm going to quiz you and see how close you can get, uh, to see how many Carmel High School alumni do you think we have currently teaching or working in the district? I do want to point out, we have Officer Morris in the back, who was a part of the video, so thank you for serving. And also Carmel Clay Schools and Carmel High School's been doing work-based learning for a long time now, as you could see through Officer Morris, uh, getting, uh, an experience with our Carmel Police Department when he was in high school. Obviously, our cadet teachers, uh, who had opportunities to teach with their current teachers, and, uh, that has even bolstered, uh, much more now, uh, through all of the efforts, uh, through Dr. Ferris, Dr. Dudley, Mr. Seaver, uh, Mr. Drew, Mr. Reed, and all the work that they're doing now, and lots more opportunities for our kids, uh, to find their career paths, which is very exciting. Um, and as you heard, schools are complex. We have over twenty-three hundred employees, and it's a people business. And you could see that, uh, shine through in the video that we just saw. So before we get to the next slide, how many Carmel alumni do you think we have that are currently serving in the district? So eighty showed up for the picture. Any educated guesses? Mr. Brown?
Go ahead, I'll, we'll go, we'll come this way.
Hundred and thirty popped into my head.
Okay, thank you.
Two hundred.
Two hundred, okay. Mrs. Jackson?
One ninety-nine.
Okay, all right. All right, we're going to Price is Right this thing, okay?
Two fifty.
Two fifty, okay. So the number that we have, two hundred and thirteen alumni that responded, um, to the, uh, email, and we have a little asterisk there because it's probably higher, I'm sure not everybody, uh, responded, um, but right around that number, and we're very proud of each and every one of them. And as you can see, um, here is all fifteen schools, and the district is represented by a Carmel High School alumni, uh, working in every facet of the district. Uh, Carmel High School, Dr. Ferris, obviously has the highest number of Carmel alum with thirty-seven. Um, and then as you can see, the district employees come in, uh, all over the district and central office at twenty-two. And you're looking at Creekside with eighteen, Clay Middle School fifteen, then we have a couple of our elementary schools that are up there. We have Woodbrook, West Clay, Carmel Elementary, um, Clay Center Elementary, Cherry Tree have some numbers up there. So, uh, of those two hundred and thirteen that responded, uh, that's the representation there per school and throughout the district. And then, uh, nearly half of them are teachers in the district, um, with their role impacting our kids each and every day. And then we have about, uh, close to twenty-eight percent in various support staff roles such as instructional assistants, um, administrators, principals, central office, uh, level administrators, five-point-two percent, um, the support staff. I have two Carmel alumni in the HR office alone, Mrs. Shear and Mrs. Hackett. Um, you see transportation, food service facilities, and then other certified staff members. And so, uh, you saw the graduating class, I believe, our most experienced, uh, Carmel employee was the class of nineteen, was it sixty-nine or sixty-eight, I think she said? Yep, and, uh, so you can see that, and then you can see the distribution, um, uh, on there, is the, on the chart there, you can see about, looks like around two thousand or two thousand two-three was a pretty good year with lots of Carmel High School alums, so just wanted to show you that, uh, that dispersed as well. Um, and so within that, um, the City of Carmel recently, recently announced their Team Bounce Back Initiative. And so that's where Mayor Finkum, um, has, uh, put together a small group, um, of Carmel, uh, alum, and what their initiative is, is to bring back our young professionals and our young people who've graduated from Carmel High School primarily, but City of Carmel, um, students and former students, and want them to come back, invest here in Carmel, uh, raise a family here in the number-one place to raise a family with their top-rated schools. And so I saw that, and I said, there, I don't think there's any organization in the City of Carmel that has more alumni than Carmel Clay Schools, as we're one of the largest, um, uh, organizations here in the City of Carmel. So, um, Carlton Anchor is heading up that group, and I recently met with him, and so shared a lot of this information and shared the video with him, and, uh, he agreed that he would love a representative from Carmel Clay Schools as part of the Team Bounce Back Initiative. So we will have a staff member that'll be serving on that initiative, uh, as they move forward to think of different innovative ideas and different things that we can do. I shared with him that I speak with the Education Professions Class or the Cadet Teaching Class, and, uh, one thing that I promised them is that they can student teach here as long as they meet the requirements in their university courses, and then we guarantee any Carmel High School grad, uh, that goes into teaching, we guarantee them an interview, uh, once they get towards graduation. And so Carlton liked that idea, and he said he might take that a little bit further within the different businesses, um, and organizations throughout Carmel. Uh, but Mrs. Skeens recently, uh, sent out a message on social media, and what she said was, "The city's supporting the schools and the schools supporting the city." And she said, "When that occurs, that's when the magic happens." And I'm grateful, uh, to our mayor, Mayor Finkum, uh, for her support of Carmel Clay Schools and everything that she's done for us and includes us on quite a bit going on in the City of Carmel. And so I just see this initiative, the Team Bounce Back Initiative, as such a positive in our community, and I look forward, uh, to the work that they're going to do. And then I'd like to finish up with a strategic plan update. So as you know, I presented to you, and Dr. B presented on September thirtieth, uh, in one of our, I believe, workshop sessions, and I have the timeline I placed here up on the screen, and wanted to share that we are going according to the plan at this time. And so, uh, we are creating, developing, and we are now going to implement a CCS community survey. And so that is going to be from December fourth through December twenty-first. We are finalizing that at this time. Uh, once we're ready to go, we will send out an email to all of our, uh, families and our parents. We're going to share it all over social media. It's going to be a separate link that we use. We are working with an outside group, Practical Insights, because we want to ensure that this is a valid and reliable survey done by professionals. They've worked with other Hamilton County schools already on similar surveys, and so they bring that level of reliability. And also, they collect all of the responses, they're going to put it into a presentation form. There will be a spot that's open, uh, for free response, so you can put anything you'd like on the survey to share with Carmel Clay Schools. And we're utilizing this and this feedback, uh, we all felt that community feedback is very important to us as a board and certainly as your next superintendent. Um, and so we're going to gather this feedback, we're going to utilize this feedback and as part of our listening sessions and focus groups that'll take place, uh, from February to April, and then we're going to use the community survey data, the feedback forums and focus groups, and then we're going to utilize all of that feedback to develop our draft strategic plan, which I will present to you then this coming summer. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
What kind of feedback have we been getting from the community on the survey coming?
So I'm just announcing, so I, I just shared it in late September, and I'm sharing it, uh, tonight, so, uh, we will be getting that out very shortly once we finalize the link. So I've not received any feedback other than sharing with people that it's coming. I know I shared this with our, uh, coordinating Greyhound Council, all of our PTO leadership, and have shared with some teachers and staff and so on and so forth.
And what's the sentiment, general sentiment?
Oh, they're excited.
Okay.
Um, and they're, I will share that our, um, our employees are very excited because we're doing this, and we're also, uh, doing the stay interviews that I shared earlier, and our staff is extremely excited to be able to share with us, uh, in that manner as well.
Awesome. And then what's the, um, what's the mechanism we'll use to make sure we get feedback from families that may have their students in other schools, like, you know, like, a private school or something like that?
Excellent question. So we are putting an advertisement in the Carmel Current, and so we will have that in there, and then we have Anne Marie with us from the Current tonight, so hopefully she'll be, uh, willing to do a story with us and, uh, get it out there. We'll also be using our social media, um, all aspects of that, through the Current, through social media, through sending it out to all of our families. We feel we'll be able to, um, hopefully get some great feedback. Um, also, our community groups, we're going to send it to, so the Lions and the VFW and all of the different other, uh, community connections that we have, we'll be sending, uh, the link and some information directly to those groups as well.
Okay, and email too?
Yes, definitely email.
I just want to make sure. And then, um, as far as community groups, can we make sure we put a rotary in there?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, be happy to do that.
I'm excited about it, and so, um, I've started to spread the word, and one of the questions I got was just, um, "Well Louise, I don't have the kids, my kids aren't at, in Carmel schools..."
Yep.
"...but they, you know, would still like to participate and all that good stuff." So I told them we would likely be using some mechanisms outside of...
Yeah, email, QR code, social media, and not only just those parents that don't have students within Carmel Clay Schools, I want the community that doesn't have kids in schools anymore.
Right.
I want to hear from them as well. That's really important to us.
It's just good stuff.
Thank you very much.
She asked my question? Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I did, am I correct in that we, there will also be at some point a student portion for the upper grades as well?
Yes, the students will be able to take, uh, the survey, and then with our high school and middle school students, they will have an opportunity to take it during school, during their SSRT at the high school, and then during Core Plus at the middle school, and then elementary students that will allow them to take that with their parents if they so choose.
Thank you. Up next, we have our monthly financial update with Mr. McMichael. In a minute.
Okay, so we're through October, um, and we're, as a general statement, I'd say we're, uh, we're tracking pretty close to where we expected to be at this time. Uh, you'll see in our, uh, three funds, our education operating referendum and rainy day fund, we are, um, we have a cash balance of two-point-two million. And compare that to last Octo- October, and it was seven million. So, um, we are, uh, doing well, but not that well. Um, uh, primarily what that is, is we, you remember, we, in this budget, we're, we're transferring, uh, funds from the, um, operating referendum and, and expenses as well. So, so we've had the expenses, but we haven't yet transferred the money. We just, we do that twice a year. So, um, if we were doing it monthly, uh, it'd be approximately five-point-nine million dollars. And so, uh, if you adjust for that, then we're tracking very close to, uh, last year, a little bit ahead. But we'll, we really take a very close look at it on December thirty-first, because at that point, we received all the property tax that we're going to receive and, and, um, so, so that's one, uh, critical date. And then we're particularly focused on, on the fiscal year, which would be June thirtieth. And so, uh, so we are tracking, uh, right along where we would expect. Um, if you were to look at our rainy day fund, which I'll show you that in a minute, but, uh, a year ago this time is when we transferred money to the rainy day for, for the first part of this year. We, we had more money in it in twenty-four than we did in, in twenty-three. And so that's, now you'll see that they're, they're pretty close together, about four million each year. So operating fund, um, we're, we're negative, uh, three-point-six million, which is typical for this time of the year because this, virtually all the revenue is coming from property tax, and so we haven't received that, uh, so we have the expenses, but, uh, we'll, we'll receive the second half, um, at the end of this year, and then it'll balance it back out. And you can see last year, uh, it's running very close to last year. That's as much coincidence as anything because, um, this fund is not, um, I mean, there's significant amount of salaries in there, but there are a lot of other expenses that don't necessarily happen every two weeks like salaries do. So, so the fact that they're that close, um, it typically wouldn't track quite that close. Uh, as I noted, in the rainy day fund, we have, uh, four-point-five million dollars, and, um, last year in October, we had four-point-seven. And so, um, at the, this time of the year, I, we're, uh, we're in good shape, and, um, that we're reprojecting. I'll respond to any questions if you have them.
Up next, Mrs. Browning has a Carmel Clay...
Yeah, I'm sorry, I did have a question. I guess I blinked on that one. Oh. It's the same question I've had the last couple or three months on the operations fund.
Yeah.
On expenditures. You know, we've now consumed all our budget on the purchase services, and then some, but we're, we are underrunning on supplies and property, but that particular line item is very lumpy.
Yep.
And, you know, like, for example, there's a two-point-three million dollar charge one month, and then it goes down to six, in the six hundreds and five hundreds. So, do you, um, do you know what's driving the, the overrun in purchase services and, and how we might be able to make up for it in the other expense?
Um, I do, um, as it happens. So, uh, overall, this fund is, is right, uh, is tracking right where we would expect it to track. As you noted, uh, it seemed we're out of balance in purchase services and, on the negative side, and then, uh, supplies on the positive side. And so it, it's, this is a matter of coding. Uh, it's, now, this is internal, so as you know, and, um, oftentimes, the state changes the coding and says, so they require us to change the coding. In this case, this is primarily in facilities, and it had to do with, um, honestly, coding, uh, things to purchase services that we, we would have assumed would have been supplies and vice versa. So, um, we've got that straightened out, but, but that's what caused it, uh, or is up to this point. Um, and then the, the, um, there is, it's not uncommon to have a variation from month to month, um, in purchase services, for example. You might, um, you might write a contract, uh, for a whole year, six months, um, as an example. So, uh, so you would have, um, and, and things like buses, for example, when they come in and you, you know, you're buying two-and-a-half million dollars worth of buses, that's going to inflate that month when we, when we pay those invoices, as compared to other months.
Good, I'm glad we got to the bottom of what's driving that. It's been a mystery for, for me, anyway. Uh, and the only, the other question I have is on the rainy day fund.
Yes.
I notice we've got a, a charge in there, um, in October of seventeen thousand seven-hundred. Just wonder if you know what that might be?
I do, but I would tell you that of three-hundred million dollars, I usually wouldn't know about seventeen thousand off the top of my head, but, um, but in this case, I do. And, uh, that, uh, has been the ca- has been the case in previous months. That's, that's a payment, um, for our, uh, it's Merzon or something, but it has to do, Amy could be more specific, but it has to do with our teacher, um, evaluation system and so forth, and so we're, we're paying a consulting company to assist with that, and, um, and that's what the seventeen thousand dollars is for.
Okay, so that's the same as it was earlier in the year then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We probably had, it, I'm not sure by, by looking here, but I wouldn't be surprised if all those expenses, um, from the beginning of the year, most or all of them are the same, same vendor.
I, I think I ask a question every month, so...
You do.
I got the same answer.
And I answer it.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's okay, that is what it is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have Mrs. Browning with the Carmel Clay Parks Department report.
Yes. Um, I had the opportunity to attend my last, um, Carmel Parks meeting on November fourteenth. Um, I've had the opportunity... I've had the opportunity to serve this past year and over my time on the school board, I've served a total of three years, so it was kind of nice. As it was a celebration meeting that was combined with the Parks Board, the City Council and the Clay Township Board, where they presented the new master plan. So very, this is a fast forward of what we're going to be seeing for our district, which is exciting. Along with facility assessments, business plans, stakeholder and staff focus groups, they also did financial assessments. They did a five and 10-year demographic study along with a community-wide survey. Stakeholder groups included our youth at Carmel High School, Town Meadow, Prairie Trace, Forestale, the Library Teen Council and also the Mayor's Youth Council. So that was really exciting that our kids got to be part of that. Financially, Carmel Clay Parks and Rec has an 84% cost recovery rate. So that means that they are bringing in enough money to cover 84% of their expenses. To put that in perspective, the national average for parks and recreation is 25%. So we're doing very well with our financial fiduciary responsibilities. Our parks, there's national ratings for excellence and good. A national average for city community park programs is a 58% for excellence and good and we are, have rated, our parks have been rated at 72%, which is no surprise probably to any of us who've had a chance to take opportunities. Some of the requests that came from the community survey was that we want more nature parks and trails, multi-use trails that connect with other, some of the bigger thoroughfares. And something that was a little bit more surprising this time is that our community is asking for canoe and kayak launches and rentals. We want to start utilizing kind of our water a little bit more. We're also looking at more special events such as family campouts, movie nights, things like that. We're partnering a lot with the City of Carmel and the Midtown area. They do a lot of different things like that. We're also looking at senior events and outdoor adventure opportunities. Another thing is they're also looking at capacity and overcrowding at facilities such as the Monon Center, the water park and summer camps. They did share, one of the reasons that we take part in the Carmel Parks Board is that great partnership with ESC and they're very thankful for our partnership in all those different types of things. So their strategic plan, what's the plan forward? They want to acquire additional parks, greenways and natural areas, particularly in the west side of Carmel. We have a lot in the east, but they're trying to add those in the west. They want to coordinate a vision for green spaces with Carmel Clay Schools in the City of Carmel. As one of the largest land owners in the city, it makes sense as we have a lot of things and so really kind of working to build a strong relationship with Carmel Clay Schools and the City of Carmel. They want to expand the trails, river access and environmental education along the White River. And the White River is a huge asset to our area and we have a lot of acreage that touches that, but it's really unutilized. So that's one of their big focuses coming up, is to be able to utilize so much of the land that is against the White River that most of it's owned by the Parks District or the City of Carmel. And so we have a great opportunity there. They also, like I said, is facilitate implementation of a west regional corridor for those additional green spaces. They have four focuses for the next coming years is the White River Corridor. They want to do a lot more with that. They want to secure long-term funding. That's one of the things that they're continuing to work on. Increase collaboration and then that west Carmel green space. It was a very exciting meeting for us. This is something that they presented to these different areas as the collaboration is really big. I know that that's something that I'm excited that we partner with them on and then this will be presented to the Parks Board for a future vote. But it was very nice. I love the idea of getting those groups together to make sure that we're on the same page and that everything's looking forward. And I'll take any questions if you have any.
Thanks for the update. I was walking the park with my family, with my sister and mom Sunday. We had a really good time enjoying the updated sidewalks or the newly implemented sidewalks in West Park. I have a couple of questions. I see that we're adding some sidewalking, looks like sidewalking, across the street where like the University High School is, do you know where? Do you know like a date, attentive date for one that's going to be installed?
Most of those multi-use paths are built by the property that it's on, so that would be in collaboration with, if it's on University High School property and they have quite a bit of property over there, that it would kind of be on what on their time was.
Yeah, it's further down, so I don't, I don't know who that would be. But I feel like, you know, there's that soccer field right there next door. And then, so it's right there, I think, and then it goes up. Okay. And then there was this little space that I saw on the other side of the new park right there that was cleared. So I was like, I wonder if they're expanding the park because it's really popular right now. So much so, my sister from Boston, she was like, "Oh, what's the draw here?" I was like, "Well, it's an updated renovated park and the little playground is like new." So do you know if they're expanding that in that space?
Is it at West Park?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think they're doing that. And we're also building a new park called the Bear Creek Park that's going to be over on the west side.
Yeah, that's further down.
Yeah, and that's going to have another one of those shelter houses, like we have a Founder's Park and at the West Park, so that'll be another building. But I couldn't tell you off the top of my head specifically what that uses that was.
Yeah, it's just so nice over there, so I'd love to see them do even more. So maybe, maybe they're thinking about putting some shelters or something.
It might be. I know like they're focused on the west side of town a lot, so.
It looks really good, yeah. I just remember my days on the Parks Board, so I was just interested to see what the vision was in that little, that little space. Thanks.
No, thank you for the update. And our last report is Dr. Barrisford's Superintendent Report.
Thank you very much. Been a great night, Shepherd Court. Thanks, Dr. Ferris and tell Mr. Enske, appreciate all the work that's been done there. And the actual unveiling of Shepherd Court will be in a basketball game in January, correct? On the 11th, January 11th. So make it, mark your calendars ahead of time to see the unveiling of Shepherd Court. Also, we went through the legislative letter really quickly, but if you have tweaks or suggestions for that, please send them my way soon as possible and then I'll have that ready for action on December, at the December meeting. And that being said, tonight, I am representing the Cardinals of Collegewood Elementary School. And they sent me this really cool hat that I could wear to represent the Cardinals. And I'm representing the elementary school with their incredible students, their active and engaged parents, super staff and amazing administrators, which include Principal Kathy Olson and Assistant Principal Kelly Bob. And so I want everybody to join me in a Carmel clap for the Cardinals of Collegewood Elementary. If you know what the Carmel clap is, it's a one clap all at the same time. Everybody ready? Outstanding. So we're going to keep that rolling and I was honored to attend the Indiana Association of School Principals' annual banquet last night. Dr. O'Stryke went with me and the honor was that we were able to sit at the same table with the District Five Middle School Principal of the Year, Stephen Pelitch, who serves at Creekside Middle School and District Five Elementary Principal of the Year, Dr. Jennifer Green. So it's pretty cool to have two out of three. Dr. Ferris, we want you there next year so we can, we can own the table. But yeah, they did a great job and you know, the honor was I got to sit with them and I couldn't be prouder than to have two of the three District Five Principals of the Year being from Carmel Clay Schools. That is, until they made the announcement, that Creekside Principal Stephen Pelitch was the State Principal of the Year, Middle School Principal of the Year. So a big congratulations to Stephen and his team and his wonderful wife, Ally was there. And we're fortunate to have such talented leaders in our district. And the sneaky thing we did was a bunch of, was it 11 or 12 administrators came and they kind of hide out because if they all came to the banquet, then they'd know something was up and it's supposed, it's a surprise. And so they hid in another room and then when they made the announcement, they all came out in the back and Stephen has to go up and give like a little acceptance speech kind of thing and he looks back there and sees all of our people and it was pretty special. So wow. If you haven't heard, another wow is that the State Elementary Spell Bowl was held this last week. And this year, Carmel Clay School Elementary Teams were hosted by Clay Center, so the Spell Bowl was at Carmel Clay, Clay Center Elementary. Exciting competition, four teams were tied almost halfway through the event with a tie score that were perfect scores. And then eventually Prairie Trace and Collegewood kind of pulled away from the pack. And after the final word count of the final round, the Cardinals of Collegewood and the Hawks of Prairie Trace both finished the competition with perfect scores of 56. So they tied as state champions of the Elementary Spell Bowl and Wes Clay placed third. They actually tied for second, but Jasper Elementary beat them out on a tiebreaker. Smokey Row was 12th, Clay Center was 13th. I mean, we were stacked up at the top of that leaderboard there. And so I'm really proud of our steely-eyed spellers in our elementary schools who spelled so well under a really tough, tough competition. So congratulations to our spellers. I also wanted to throw out a huge congratulations to Carmel High School's very own Frau Becker. And she received the 2024 Indiana Foreign Language Teachers Association William Hatfield Distinguished Lifetime World Language Career Award. That's a mouthful, but it's the big one. It's the big award you can get from that organization. Prestigious Honor celebrates her incredible contributions to world language education or dedication to uplifting Indiana teachers through countless conferences, workshops, webinars, more. So proud of her impact and commitment to language learning. This is probably the news everybody already knows, but I have to, I have to put it in there that the Greyhound Marching Band performed orchestrations at the Bands of America Grand Nationals Final. And they placed runner-up by less than a point. And there were 12 amazing bands in the finals, I got to see all of them this year. And I'm definitely biased, but I don't think there was another band who took the field who had more, a more complex show, both musically and technically. They had a lot of what I would call high-risk moves, like there was one where the music stops, all the rifles are in the air and then the sound goes boop. And all the rifles were caught at exactly the same time. It was crazy and the crowd went absolutely wild. The other part of their show is, I called it the fastest show on turf. They are marching like the fastest I've ever seen any marching band march. So real proud of the kids, they crushed it totally and you know, doing your very best when it counts the most, you can't do much better than that. So real, real proud of the marching greyhounds and congratulations to them. Now my bell ringer's a little bit different and I'm going to ask Colleen to pop a picture up on the wall because Carmel High School Senior Julia Hohn and Junior Matty Arroyo captured the prestigious World Food Championship Junior Division earlier this month and they'll be, she'll be up there in just a minute. Their Gorditas El Pastor dish, which I think Dr. O'Stryke had for lunch today, not theirs, it's at another restaurant. It's a traditional Mexican meal that features marinated al pastor pork and homemade corn tortilla, tortilla. And it was, but the, you know, they won was one thing, but it was really a really special story that was so exciting and so touching in many ways. And I won't go into detail, but, too much detail, but if you get a chance to see the story, it's a, it's a heartwarming story of why it was not only a win, but also it was a special time for the students. So congratulations, Julia and Matty. We are both happy for you and very proud of you. And so in closing, I just say I want to wish everybody a wonderful Thanksgiving break. We hope you all get to spend some quality time with those you love and please know that we are thankful for you. I believe that having an attitude of gratitude is one of the keys to a happy life and we always highlight being thankful in November, but really it can be an everyday thing if we really apply it. And thankful to serve alongside the students, the staff, the families of Carmel Clay Schools and this community and it's just a wonderful place to be. And so I'm still the luckiest superintendent on the planet for getting to work at Carmel Clay Schools and I wish you all a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. Just have a couple announcements. Our next school board meeting is our December 16th regular session, school board meeting, which will also be the last meeting for Katie and Louise who have served with us for a long time and we're very appreciative. Then December 20th is a teacher workday with no students. And the winter break is December 20th through January 6th. January 6th is another workday for the teachers and then students return on January 7th. May I have a motion to adjourn our meeting? Thank you, Katie, a second. Thank you, Greg. Meeting adjourned.